Okay, folks. Okay, please be seated, we're gonna reconvene. Okay, at the beginning, I made it through, we had nine slips and we made it through those nine, now I have an additional thirteen. So if anybody who came in after wished to speak to council on this matter, the slips are outside, please fill one out and give it to our city clerk, or she'll pass them around if you want one. Okay, next speaker I have up is Barbara Ebel.
Barbara Ebel, Brisbane resident, fifteen years. I'm going to speak in two parts tonight. As you know, frankly, I'm part of the housing over my dead body camp. I looked at the Baylands map and I tried to envision where we could put housing if it was absolutely necessary, and to be honest, I just can't see it even if it's cleaned up. Right next to the Caltrain tracks isn't great, next to the train yard or high-speed rail isn't great either, or Caltrain. High liquefaction zone, not great at all. Tank farm holding 25 million gallons of jet fuel and gasoline, very not great. In a Bermuda Triangle ringed by three Superfund sites, really very not great. What I honestly believe would be best is if we had a magic land-use ferry that could teleport the truck-heavy industrial uses of Crocker Park to the Baylands and leave what is now Crocker Park open for mixed-use development. However, not being a particularly fanciful person, I have had for years a last-stitch alternative that I have kept almost entirely to myself. One of my big fears is if the state got a stranglehold on Brisbane, the plan put forward would be one that nobody ever wanted to see built. But through the sheer cussedness of things, it would get built. I am not a person to play games. I adhor manipulation and backhandedness. The first half of this plan, the first half of my fears have now come to pass, and so here I have the foundations for you for a new plan. A plan that does not rely upon a pinky promise with Mr. Hill, who is termed out, and that would not allow SB 35 or any other housing legislation mess to come and dismantle our remaining power to choose our future. Because right now, that is what you are asking of this community, and frankly, it's not good enough. This plan does not require that we change the general plan. It is possible to build a great deal of housing without changing a thing. I have hinted at this several solutions several years ago when I suggested corporate housing. Let's consider. As conscientious persons, we have concerned what would happen to individual homeowners in the likely event of a cap failure due to settlement, sea level rise, or earthquake. I am proposing housing stock that would not be in private hands, but rather corporate-owned campuses, ensuring deeper pockets to deal with known issues of instability of land and contamination and unknown problems. This would ensure people actually living on the Baylands worked on the Baylands, going far further than any other measure to mitigate the fact that even people who lived within walking distance of transit stops for the vast majority of time still choose to drive. Furthermore, land would not need to be rezoned for this type of housing. State law allows for efficiency units in commercial zoning. These are exactly the types of units many millennials and young techs are looking for as they enjoy their youth or save for a home. State law requires only that efficiency units are larger than 150 square foot and smaller than 400, have a closet and laundry on site, and that the occupancy be limited to two persons per unit, and that's about it. They can include a kitchen or kitchenette, or no kitchen at all, they can have communal spaces, they can be bedrooms or studios, and parking requirements vary depending on the jurisdiction. This would also fulfill state requirements for our housing without rezoning toxic land. It is my conviction that if we are going to build housing on the Baylands, this is the best way we can do, this is the best we can do by the future and by the people of Brisbane. We will keep our hands as clean as we can. This plan will limit the exposure of children. We will not give away taxpayers' money for a meaningless entitlement. We will not make individual homeowners responsible for liabilities greater than their total net worth. We could absolutely minimize the increase in congestion. This would automatically couple housing and development. We could, we will retain control even if our politicians change their coats or lose their offices. We will have a positive effect on the housing market by building new housing stock composed entirely of low-rise, low-cost units. The only neat trick we need to figure out is how to make this new population a part of the city that we love. I hope this is a positive, innovative, forward-thinking solution that everyone in this community can rally behind. If you have any more questions, I will be following up with papers, documentation tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Next slip I have is Greg Anderson.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Greg Anderson, coincidentally also a fifteen-year resident of Brisbane. So here we are talking about housing on the Baylands, and a lot of words have been said about why people want housing on the Baylands, but it all comes down to the jobs and housing imbalance. And if we didn't have such a crisis right now, we would never be talking about housing on the Baylands. I don't think anyone would really be looking to build here if we had other options. So one of my big concerns about our upcoming ballot measure is that it leaves unspoken what's happening on the east side. I know we've all said there's not going to be any housing on the east side, and I haven't done the math about the current plan, but it looks like it's a wash or maybe slightly in favor of housing balance in terms of what is being voted on right now. And so if we walk away with that and then later come back and say, you know, as was proposed during the city council or in the planning commission deliberations, that we're going to put a tech center on the east side, then suddenly your housing and jobs balance is all out of whack, and the housing advocates who backed this plan are gonna feel like you really betrayed them. So I think at this point in time, you want to move that tech center over to the west side so it can balance out your jobs and commercial, and somehow put an ale on the ground about what you're going to do on that east side that's going to be viable for the site. I think this would be an excellent time and place to be requiring solar panels. I don't feel like this group is there anymore, but I wish that's what the conversation we're having was. The other thing I'm really concerned about is in terms of just the remediation. We've had experts for over a decade saying this is high liquefaction, but I'm still concerned about Tom Graff's verbal testimony that he looked at eight wells and determined that there was no liquefaction. And so, you know, you've got competing experts here, and I'm really concerned even though the weight of a few words and verbal testimony versus lots of printed documents from the U.S. Geological Association may be disproportionate, I just don't want to see anyone running off with that, and I really think that the city council needs to have real, you know, printed documentation about what the stability of that land is before it goes to a vote, because if you get E. Fred Lee up here and saying, "How are we gonna remediate this?", his answer is gonna be quite different if you say, "How do you remediate a no liquefaction zone that's contaminated versus how do you remediate a high-contamination zone that's contaminated?" And finally, my wife already said it better than I could, but I'm also really concerned about the financial viability of this plan. We've put a lot of study into how we can make this affordable for the city, but as other people have said, have we really looked at the residents? Is this going to be affordable for the residents? This, as much as we love Brisbane, this site is not a low-density site. Planning Commission recommended low density because commercial-only and jobs and commercial imbalance, and if you keep it low-density, then you escape a lot of the questions of safety. But now here we are, we have to tackle these questions of safety, we have to go over three stories, it's just not going to be financially viable. And as has been said before, we know about the toxic contamination, we've got tanks under the ground, we recently had a nice weekend where I spent with someone who travels around doing dog-and-pony blacksmithing shows, she happened to work for a company that remediates toxic sites, and she had some nice stories about how they had to pull one of these tanks out of the Baylands because it was developing a plume. We know that there are more out there, we don't know where they are, we know that they're degrading, they're going to go off at some point, we're going to put in this cap so hopefully nothing comes through, but we have high liquefaction, so maybe it's gonna break at some point, so we're gonna monitor it all the time. And then when the repair comes, how much is that going to cost? None of these financial analysis has really said what is the 10-, 20-, and 50-year plan for how much it's going to cost to remediate this, and I don't think that we can make this financially safe for an individual homeowner. So I'd also really like to see the city council change this, not to 90% renters, but 100% renters. If you're gonna have someone take the financial risk for this kind of an operation, put it on someone who owns the whole building. Put it on someone who owns the tech center and is building family housing for their place. Don't put this burden on someone who's going to lose their life savings if they come up with a repair for their home that they've invested greatly in order to make this for their life. So those are my three points. Thank you for tackling all of this.
Thank you, Greg. Former Mayor Lori Lough.
Good evening, council members. Well, I want to commend the council for really coming this far. I know it has not been an easy road, and I was on that road with you not too long ago. And I want to encourage you to continue by leading. We have an opportunity here to show the Bay Area that we can have a model of sustainability that fits our town's character. We don't want to have just an ugly stepsister of Brisbane that we stick up in the far-right corner. We want to have something that's really integrated with the fabric of our community. And when I look at this proposed amendment to the general plan, I don't see that. It projects 1,800 to 2,200 housing units, and if you look at the current population of Brisbane, we have 1,800 units. Can you imagine our entire town, both central Brisbane and the ridge, put up in that one area in OU1? That's a lot of people. And that doesn't seem to fit in with our town's character, which as a lot of people have said tonight, you know, really values open space and connectivity and being able to walk to amenities. Look at what we did with Parkside, like you said, Madison, you know, we were able to really take that plan, work with it, and come up with something that really was a good fit. So I would love to see you work with this a little bit more, and I really think that it is achievable. And so, you know, we want to have an area that future Brisbane residents can walk to their schools, to the park, to social gatherings, and to open space. And also, think about transportation. Right now, the proposal is to have all of the residential on the north side of Geneva Avenue with that extension, with the BRT. Well, that's gonna be a very big transportation hub. Why would we just neglect the whole south side of it? It seems to me that if we have housing on both sides of it, on the north and the south, that really then utilizes the transportation along there, and people can hop on and hop off and get to the Bart Station at Geneva, at Balboa Park, you know, get across to Hunter's Point, you know, it's just neglecting that opportunity if you're only building on half of it. Can you imagine a city that only built up to a line, and that was a major transportation hub, and they didn't build south of it? It just doesn't make sense. And then, looking at the commercial space, I'd like, I'd recommend that you increase that, because the commercial, that's what really gives us, our city its revenue, and I was hoping that it could be in the range of five to seven million square feet, and I think a range is really important, not just a bright-line number, because with a range, then you have more leverage, more flexibility down the line when you're actually negotiating with the developer. And you can say, "Well, let's start at five million, but if you want to go up, then you're gonna have to give us something in return." So you want to make sure that there's a range there. And look at what, I think, we had talked about the current ratio, whatever that is, I think we have got 1,800 residential units and something around seven million square feet of commercial. You know, use that as a guide, because right now, we have great services for our residents because of all the revenue that we get from business license fees, from hotel tax, and other things. So we don't want to neglect that asset that we have with our commercial space. And with the language that's in the ballot, you know, I think that's more important also to make sure that we get it right the first time, because we don't want to go back to the voters again. So retain that flexibility. I'd suggest lowering it to OU2 to decrease the density, to have it more in line with our city's character. And also, remember that sustainability framework that we worked so hard on? Well, if you look at that, it talks about being transit-oriented and having an integration with the community benefits, and I don't see that right now in the current proposal. So I respectfully request that you look at revising the general plan draft amendment and the ballot measure to be consistent with Brisbane's character. Namely, I would like to see less dense residential development being extended into OU2, making sure that it's integrated with the community amenities, and increase the commercial space to five to seven million square feet, and make that a range. So, you know, let's take this opportunity to really create a sustainable development that we can all be proud of, and for a place, to have a place that future residents of Brisbane can call home, and that it reflects the same values that we all cherish and that we value in calling Brisbane our home, because it will be their home as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Kyle Corbett.
Hey, Mayor and council. I'm Kyle Corbett, I'm a resident of Brisbane. I just wanted to start by saying thank you so much. I know this is like a really hard process, and you spent a lot of time working on this, and I appreciate all the effort you put into that. I'm speaking as someone who's, I'm a relatively new resident of Brisbane, and I love this place, we looked at a lot of different places, we were deciding, and we love this community, and I really want to make my home here. I have my, I'm here with my wife and my two-year-old, and I see this development as such a wonderful thing for families like mine, the opportunity to find our own place when everything is so expensive here. And I just, I feel like sometimes it's really easy to feel like you're, you've got sort of this like antagonistic almost relationship with the developer, and it's, you want to put more and more requirements on the developer so that, because you feel like they're sort of imposing on your space, but I just want you to remember that as you do that, as you drive up the price of the development, it's really driving up the price for people like me, the eventual residents and owners of these areas. And just to keep that in mind as you go through the process, and I'm 100% in favor, I think 100% remediation is important, making sure that all the safety standards are up, I think that's really important. I'm not saying there shouldn't be any requirements, I'm just saying, keep in mind as you're putting these requirements, that really those costs are getting passed on to people like me that will be living in this development, and so I just, I hope that there's a balance there and just making sure that it still can, doesn't get so expensive that we can't afford to live there, and so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kyle. Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident, and, you know, I hear Kyle, but the fact of the matter is, is we can't recreate Brisbane, central Brisbane on the Baylands. If it was beautiful, pristine, clean land, not landfill, not toxic, not all these other things, then yeah, we probably could, but that's not the facts of the matter. Why is OU1 called OU1 and OU2 called OU2? Let's start with that. OU stands for Operating Unit 1 and Operating Unit 2. Why are they separated? Probably because they have different characteristics underlying what the operating unit is. So OU1 is polluted from Schlegelak, and OU2 is probably more polluted from the rail yard and all the things seeping down into it. And so when you look at it, OU1 does not equal OU2. They are not the same land, they are not the same characteristics, they do not have the same remediation issues. In OU2, there are remediation issues that we aren't even aware of yet, and I think that there's a huge amount of hubris to think that we can remediate what we don't even know exists yet. I mean, we heard stories about them burying railcars and engines that they wanted to get rid of, they just would bury them, you know? So what is out there? I mean, we don't know, the EIR is so incomplete, and stuff or chemical, and you talk about moving housing down into OU2, there shouldn't really be housing out there at all, and it's being crammed down our throats. Somebody said, "Yeah, you're ordered to do housing." And the whole reason the state wants high-density housing is because it's more affordable for people, and we have a housing crisis, and that's why they're cramming it down our throats. They want high-density housing next to transportation, and that's what OU1 is. And what, you know, Bill Decker brought up an interesting point about what do these people want? Do they want to live in the kind of house that you and I live in, or do they want to live in a convenient multi-unit building with transportation to their job that they can afford, where they don't have to have a car, and they can spend that money on other things that they, that they want to do? So we don't even know what the characteristics of these people are. We all are saying, "Well, we don't want, you know, them to have eight stories or nine stories." Well, maybe eight or nine stories is okay, especially if the ninth story happens to be a swimming pool or a gym, you know? And so we have to stop thinking about that we're gonna recreate Brisbane as we know it, as we grew up with it, out here on the Baylands. It's a different situation. And I guess, you know, the things that are important to those people will probably be affordability and transportation. And, you know, I'd rather have an ugly stepsister than a sick stepsister. That's what we're really talking about. We're talking about land that is really sick, really sick, and I don't want to build housing on it. I don't want to build housing out there at all because of how sick it is, but if we have to make this compromise, then I would like to limit the liability to the area that is most safe for us to build housing, and I'm sorry that it's 2.6 miles from us instead of, you know, or 2.9 miles from us instead of the 1.6 miles that the Mission Blue Center is from home, okay? And in reality, I'm not gonna walk the 1.6 miles to the Mission Blue Center, just like I'm not gonna walk the 2.9 miles to the train station. I'm gonna drive or take some other form of vehicular transportation, and the difference of driving time from here to the ridge, six minutes versus nine minutes. So it's, the separation in our minds is different than the separation in our daily lives and the reality that we're facing. And the transportation corridor aspects of it, I don't know how that's all gonna work out, because I took, I tried to take the train to the ballpark yesterday, and it was like half an hour late, so I ended up getting a ride, and we went down Third Street, and my God, the amount of development that's going on on Third Street is huge, and the Third Street rail line is supposed to service all of that, so I don't know how that's actually gonna work out. But affordability equals high-density and less than a half a mile to transit, that's what the state of California is asking us to do, and the plan that you've put together is what that does. I agree with everything that Clara said, everything that Clara said, and I also agree with most of what Ray said, and I think that we could make this better than what it is, but I think you're on the right track for what we have to do if we have to have housing. I also thought that Barbara's idea was extremely innovative and should be given consideration, but we're pretty far down this path to make a U-turn. So thank you for listening, and thank you so much for all of the hard work that you've done. We have some really tough decisions ahead of us, and ones that are gonna affect not just our lives, but the lives of people 50 years from now, so we really need to tread carefully. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Michelle. Kevin Freyer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I would also like to echo what everybody who comes up here and says to you, "Thank you so much for doing this, I know this is an enormous amount of information to take in." Is that better?
Yeah.
I know this is an enormous amount of information to take in and to process. I actually wrote up my comments, so I'll just read them to you. There are lessons to be learned from the development of the northeast, northeast ridge that I think can be instructive as we look at the challenges of housing and the development of the Baylands. Like the Baylands, the development of the northeast ridge was a hard-fought and contentious issue that divided the community. I moved from a small apartment in central Brisbane to the northeast ridge in 2000, and in those first years, as I became involved in our community, I became acutely aware of the divisions between central Brisbane and the ridge. Often, when attending meetings, residents unaware that I lived the ridge would express their unfiltered attitudes and resentments of the new developments and the folks that lived there. I think this reaction is natural enough. Such a change and growth spurt in a small town takes time to absorb. The ridge development is separated by geography, and there is a dissonance between the unified architecture of a development such as the ridge and the organic look and feel of a town that has grown slowly over an 80-plus-year time period. These create basic obstacles to overcome as Brisbane worked to absorb its new residents. In a stroke of genius, the community leaders who worked on the ridge developed and created Mission Blue Center. Mission Blue Center has served as a focal point that bridges community members from the ridge and central Brisbane. My own contribution to soften these divisions was the creation of Live at Mission Blue, and in the early years of promoting this concert series, one of my key talking points was how the arts can serve as a bridge within our community. And indeed, in the 20 years since people started making the ridge their home, the divisions and attitudes regarding the ridge have softened, and community leaders have emerged from this new population who share in the small-town values of Brisbane, which include the environment, our school, and the arts. The challenges of the Baylands development are far greater than those of the northeast ridge. This expansive tract of land has been largely derelict for decades, and it is hard for us to imagine it as anything else. For many years, we have debated what should and shouldn't be built there, and we have only recently begun to consider the implications of a housing component that will double the population of Brisbane. There will continue to be long and difficult debate, both between opposing views within our community and between our city and the developer, but in the future, we will have folks making this new development their home, and they will in turn look to become involved in the city of Brisbane. How will we anticipate the natural divisions between this new population and our established community? What will be the features of this development that will connect or detach the new Brisbane from the old? The northeast ridge and its residents who live there is a successful addition to our community, and it is in part due to the vision of the leaders of that time who fought hard for development with amenities that were on a human scale in keeping with the values of Brisbane. The proposed language of the ballot measure for approval of housing on the Baylands that allows for housing only north of the Geneva extension is, in my opinion, a mistake. It will concentrate a new population more than a mile from central Brisbane. South of the Geneva extension will then be developed for commercial use, creating a further geographic barrier. It will isolate the new population from us and us from them. One of the greatest challenges of housing on the Baylands is creating connectivity between these two populations. Please reconsider the language and intent of this ballot measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. The one I have is Sarah Seeloff, Ilaf? Can you pronounce that? Ilaf?
Seeloff, Sarah Seeloff.
Oh, okay, you made your S's different.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. I am Sarah Seeloff, I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Creative Land Recycling. We're a nonprofit based in Oakland with a mission to facilitate sustainable and equitable land reu- and equitable land reuse. For the last year or more, you've heard from me at these meetings, uh, my perspective has always been to share best practices in brownfield redevelopment. Uh, in the spirit of transparency, I'd like to share with you that Jonathan Scharfman, the Managing Director of UPC, joined our board in April. Mr. Scharfman's new role on the board does not in any way influence what I have to share tonight, which is, as always, guided by Sea Clear's mission to share best practices and provide technical assistance to support Brownfield's redevelopment. And one best practice with these projects is keeping at it. So I'd like to echo everyone who's come before me by saying that brownfield, uh, projects like the Brisbane Baylands are not easy and you are to be commended for the energy and the dedication that you've all shown to date. I have a few comments to offer. Uh, the first relates to density. The maximum, uh, floor area ratio was reduced, uh, from 2.4 to 1.4 in the general plan amendment and the EIR studied an FAR of up to 5.5. High-density residential near transit is an urban planning best practice, as you know, and lowering the maximum FAR doesn't translate into an efficient TOD community. One of the great things about Brownfield's redevelopment is that you have the opportunity to start over. As a previous speaker noted, leadership is about creating the vision and you therefore have an opportunity before you that many cities can only wish that they had. Uh, and therefore, keeping in mind the, uh, the benefits of transit-oriented development and the role that that plays in facilitating the kind of sustainable development, uh, that, uh, that you would like to see, I'd encourage you to raise the FAR to make that transit piece work. My second comment relates to the proposed amendment's limitation of housing to north of Geneva and west of the Caltrain. Given that former rail yards are regularly remediated for residential land use, this is a missed opportunity. Homes can be located on remediated rail yards and frequently are. This is your opportunity to get someone else to fund the cleanup of this land and get the cleanup that you desire and deserve. Across California and the US, we've seen numerous examples of rail yards safely and successfully remediated and redeveloped into thriving communities that do include housing, lots of it. Sacramento is an example to which I'll return later. Um, I appreciate the city's concern for the baylands remediation. It's very important. And I'd like to remind you that Sea Clear, as always, is here to offer free technical assistance, um, and advisory services and resources for the city as you work with regulators and the developer, uh, on the cleanup. Um, I'd also like to make you aware that we're organizing the first California Land Recycling Conference this October in Carson and scholarships are available for public sector representatives. So we certainly hope that you will mark your calendars and consider joining us. It's going to be, um, the Brownfields redevelopment event of the year. Um, I'd also like to note that, coming back to my previous comment about Sacramento and its rail yards, we are working to establish a national Brownfields Leadership Mentoring Network, which can put you in touch with seasoned Brownfields, uh, practitioners from the public sector from around the country. Um, so I hope that if that's useful, that you will not hesitate to, uh, reach out and take advantage of those programs. Thanks again for your effort on this project.
Wait, Sarah?
I got a just quick question, Sarah. Um, Sarah?
The town of Carson, um, where you're going to have this conference is, um, did, did they just move forward with the project to put housing on an unregulated landfill?
I believe that the landfill redevelopment is going to become a mall, so it'll be commercial.
Okay, so no housing on the unregulated?
I'd have to double check the plan to be, to be a hundred percent sure, but my understanding is that the major feature is going to be a shopping mall.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ross Stikes, six-year resident of Brisbane, so I'm one of the new ones. Uh, honorable and, it's an old community. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, uh, thank you for taking on this difficult task with professionalism and openness and for giving the community an opportunity to come here and participate and comment today. Uh, my comments are focused on the question of housing density in the proposed residential, residential areas. Um, I'm also concerned about the remediation and the zoning, but there are people that can speak more intelligently than I can on that subject. Um, I really feel encouraged about the pro-housing stance of the proposal as it stands now. I think it would be a good thing to offer others to join our community, right now we just don't have, um, additional housing. This really, even though it will change the character of our community by adding a lot to it, it will, you know, enable other people to join our community. I also feel that having a mix of various types of housing, um, is a good thing. Condos, rental apartments, single-family homes, it brings diversity to our community and we don't really have a lot of multi-family dwellings. We don't have a lot of apartment complexes or, or things like that in our community. And I think that the transit-oriented nature of what you're proposing is a really good thing as well. I am however concerned about the extent of the density proposed in, in OU one. Um, first, there doesn't seem like a lot of space for amenities, grocery stores, bars, um, and community centers, anything that would really provide something that someone could walk to and get access to, a Trader Joe's, um, a library, small convenience stores, that type of thing. Um, secondly, if, if this is executed, there will be a huge difference in character between what we would consider old Brisbane, which now would include the ridge, uh, and new Brisbane, which would be this new development. Um, right now, we kind of have an interesting sort of character to the town. We've got a nice mix of different types of residential and industrial and commercial, uh, pretty good balance between residential and commercial and the ability to walk to an open space. Whenever I walk down the hill, for example, I go through San Antonio Canyon, so I go through a park. It's, it's great. This area just seems like it's not going to have that same feeling to it, which really concerns me because it's going to create this, this divide, this gap between this new community, which, and, you know, might not necessarily be a bad thing. I mean, it gives people who want to live in a more dense environment the ability to do so, but it does seem like it's a little crazy. There's, there's going to be a lot of people crammed in a very small space, which just isn't Brisbane. Um, they're not going to have the same opportunities we will have to experience some of the things that make our community unique. And it's not San Francisco, it's not San Mateo, it's not some of the larger communities. It's small, we're on a hill, we have a lot of cool things here and it doesn't really give that feeling. So it really is going to change the character of Brisbane, more so than I think just adding, doubling the capacity would change the character of Brisbane. So that's primarily my concern. That's what I, I really sort of felt when I saw that plan was that if we could spread that out and we could move some housing into OU two and, you know, notwithstanding the technical challenges of that, but I know technical challenges can be surmounted, all it takes is money and time. But if we were able to spread it out, it seems like there'd be a greater opportunity for it to feel more like Brisbane, to be included in Brisbane proper, uh, and to build a community that, that wouldn't feel separated from the rest of us. So, that's it.
Thanks, Ross.
Thank you, Ross.
Maurice Killian. Mayor Killian, you pronounce it for me.
Good evening, Mayor Conway and as fellow council members. I'm Maurice Quillan with Recology, San Francisco. And, um, I have just one item for consideration and a comment this evening. Um, when we look at the Beatty heavy commercial zone, um, I would ask you to consider perhaps rotating the southern boundary so, uh, so that it actually goes around existing parcels as opposed to bisecting existing heavy commercial parcels or parcels that could be used for heavy commercial. And then my second, uh, item would be that, um, while, while we don't have an opinion concerning the residential land use, um, I, I am concerned with having proposed residential land use adjacent to existing heavy commercial operations in the northern part of the property.
Thank you, Maurice.
Hi, Ken Walker, 22-year Brisbane resident. Um, I think other people have said what I, I was planning to say, so I had to change it a few times, but mainly I just want to express just a, a few concerns, some thoughts about this ballot measure. It just seems like that number was kind of come, I, I want to understand where that number came from. It seemed to come from kind of late in a meeting where there was kind of this binary decision made to, yes, we now we need to do housing and then how much should it be? Um, I think, you know, a thousand, 2,000, 3,000. It's felt a little arbitrary. Now, I know a lot of thought went into that before you came up with those ideas, but, um, still, what I, I would like to see is what is that, what would that look like? Because we came up with these numbers and then I think maybe there was a thought that there's a part of the baylands where housing makes sense and then, okay, all these numbers go to that part. And so it seems like a concession with the numbers to put it in a convenient spot. So, you know, if I'm going to vote on this, I want to understand, you know, why do you feel we need 2,000 houses out there? And what would this look like in that area? Because when I hear questions of, well, would that be six or eight stories? That means we didn't think about where we wanted there and we just said a number and now here's what we're getting back. So, you know, let's think about the community, reiterating what other people said, let's keep it Brisbane. It's not going to look exactly like here, but there's still nature there. You know, there's water, water goes down there and we can restore some of the, you know, the habitats down there. Um, and that's an important value of Brisbane. Community and connectedness is a, is a value of Brisbane as well. And how can you connect? Walkways, parks where people gather, not a park, you know, not a softball field that, you know, only a few people, dogs and, you know, outside universities and outside clubs, um, baseball teams use. You know, you want somewhere where people actually will congregate. So let's think about that, whatever we build, you know, I can't say whether eight stories or 10 stories, maybe in one spot a 10-story would make sense, but the rest should be lower, right? So that you have some places where people can walk and connect with other people. The other part is the, you know, sustainability is important in nature. You have to feel like you live in the land, right? And that's why, living in central Brisbane especially, and even the ridge, we live on the mountain. So if somebody says, hey, we need to, you know, we need to maintain, you know, the beauty of, of San Bruno Mountain, we get it because we live on it, right? So if you're living in, you know, if you're just in a concrete jungle, you never see any, you know, very many trees except for a few that are planted on your street, you're not going to have that connectedness to the nature. And, you know, if you can't connect with the rest of the community, then you're not going to have a connectedness with the community either. You know, what we have a danger of is just creating a lot of silos in the city. You know, we have the Sierra Point area, which is kind of far away, you know? And we have central Brisbane and then through the industrial park over here, you've got the ridge and then you're going to have these houses out there. So how can we make it so we feel like one community? You know, that's the, that's a tough challenge, it's not easy. So anyway, just want to express some concerns and some thoughts. Thank you.
Hey, Clark, can we have staff respond to, um, where the 1,800 to 2,200 allotment came
That was a process that the city, uh, went through with, um, with our state senator. Um, and, um, that was a back and forth over several, several months. Uh, and the, uh, the number, uh, was a negotiated number. It was, I think originally focused on the, uh, area that would be above Geneva, um, but that was for the purposes of negotiating the number in terms of where the actual housing takes place. That's really a discretionary decision of the city council.
And originally, just, just for the public, um, the original proposed number by our legislators was 4,400. Um, and so the compromise that we could get to was 1,800 to 2,200. So just, we, we didn't pull it out, out of nowhere. That's, that's the kind of the background and how the, how the number came about.
Benjamin Smith.
All right. Hello, awesome city council. Thank you very much for listening. My name is Benjamin Smith. I am a longtime Brisbane resident. I'm the proud father of two fantastic ladies who've lived their entire life in this awesome community and partner to a loving pillar of support, support for our schools and community programs, Vicky. I have struggled to understand this plan's treatment of transit and bicycle paths. Um, the modification of such a significant amount of Brisbane gives us the chance to shape the future, which I'm very concerned about for my children. I would encourage you to consider several studies that I can give to you later that were done by the University of British Columbia, the cities of Baltimore and Portland that show that the bike lanes, even the ones that are the, the highest class, if you will, by Caltrans, in this, increase the number of traffic fatalities by as much as 90%. And so I would implore you to consider our children's future and our residents' safety and consider, um, separate commute lanes for bicycles like San Francisco is doing now.
Thank you, Ben.
Hello, city council. Um, my name is Lisa Greenley. I'm a 30-year-plus resident of Brisbane and, um, gosh, it's been a long time since when I moved here, we had four lousy bars and a flowing Carol's coffee shop. I mean, it was a tiny little town and here we are looking at a giant development. Um, and I don't envy your position, but I appreciate all your work. Anyways, um, just a few thoughts, because everybody's really said a lot of what I already want to say. Um, one thing is interesting about the density is that if you have a smaller footprint, you can have more open space, more green space, and I get that. Um, and I would like to have more green space and open space. If it means a taller building and more space around it, that's good, but just not a bunch of them together, spread it out a little bit, just so, anyways. So the idea of moving it in a larger area, but I'm not opposed to tall buildings. Um, that's just my personal opinion. Um, and I also am very concerned about affordability because, as we all know, just building more houses don't make them more affordable. Um, so I definitely would try and request some affordability out of all this housing that we're going to, that we're going to allow to be built. Um, make it beautiful, make it green and definitely require arts as part of the vision because, like Kevin said, arts can bring a community together. Open space, parks can bring a community together. We want this to be a part of our city that other parts that already exist want to go to. Not that we avoid, you know, but someplace we want to go to. Um, and I think we can do that, um, by some simple, I know this is just a very loose framework, you're not getting down in the weeds on this. Um, but just, um, spreading it out a little bit, I think will make, and I honestly agree with the woman who, who spoke about the Brownfields, is that make some, make them clean it up, you know? If, if you're, if you spread it out and you put housing where housing is not supposed to be or not convenient to be, it gets cleaned up and that's what we want. I want remediation out there. I, I don't like living next to a really polluted area and if housing gets us there, then great, you know? So, there you go. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Next slip, Jonathan Scharfman.
Mr. Mayor Council, Jonathan Scharfman with UPC. Um, I also want to, uh, just recognize this exceptionally difficult task that you have before you and for years, um, the dedication to your community, um, that you've demonstrated in processing this plan. So thank you. Uh, when I was before you, about this time last year, I brought, uh, our, our consulting team to answer technical questions and I, I cited about 200 years of collective experience there. And since the council had made some decisions about moving the project to a next step, uh, we've brought about another 75 years of experience to the team. And with, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce a new board member of UPC, Greg Vilkin, and a new urban, uh, design lead for the project, Mr. Peter Calthorpe, and just ask that, uh, you can give them a few minutes to, uh, talk about, um, what they've worked on in the past 40 years that, that's relevant here.
All right, I have slips from them, so.
Yes, would, would, would you mind if, if, if we were to just aggregate the, the, the three? I'd yield the rest of my time and just have them talk to you for a few minutes.
Come on up, come on forward.
Thanks.
Could we, we have some slides. It would be better to illustrate our point.
How, how, how long are your slides show?
We'll, we'll be fast. Uh, we'll take more than five minutes.
Okay, all right. Okay. So, so who's Greg?
Do we have those? I'm Greg. My name is Greg Vilkin. I'm the new senior board member for UPC.
Okay.
Um, and are they, do you have those, Ingrid?
Okay.
And I thank you very much.
Greg and Peter.
This is Peter Calthorpe.
Okay.
And, uh, Peter Calthorpe.
C-A-L-T-H-O-R-P.
Right. Okay. All right. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about why I'm here. Okay? I just retired from, as president of Related California. For the last 38 years, I've had a, a long career in development and I've developed over $10 billion worth of real estate, virtually all kinds, and I've done a lot of housing. And so I just, the reason that's important, I think, is that there's been a lot of starts and stops with UPC and there's been a lot of animus back and forth with the city. I want to end all that, okay? And so I want to show you some of the projects that I've developed and while I'm here is because I want to see a wonderful extension of your community being built here. Okay? So my development experience is, ranges from high density in downtown San Francisco right now, we're building a 600-foot tower at Transbay, a 400-foot tower, plus a partnership with the city of San Francisco, a city office building. These are the projects I just finished before I left Related, um, high rises and, and mid-rises in. in LA. A lot of mid-density experience, dozens and dozens of projects, but just a few of the Northern California ones here, some in San Jose, some in San Francisco, some in Oakland. But again, all different, all different needs, because there's no two communities that have the same needs. So the job as a developer is not to enforce my will on the community, it's to look, understand what the community is looking for and use our expertise to help bring that forward. A lot of historic rehabilitation work, including the building at the top, which is the Public Health Service Hospital on the Presidio, which is part of the National Park. And it was a project that I, I did when Ms. Murphy was, uh, one of the, uh, Presidio trustees, and we got selected to go rehab that building. Okay? A lot of urban renewal work all over the country. This one happens to be in Oakland. When we were approached by Mayor Brown in 1998 to help, we could stabilize the city of Oakland that they'd spent a lot of money on, and we told them that you needed to build more housing, because then the housing would help activate the streets, and that would fill up the empty retail that was there in droves. Okay, so all this came together in a project that I started 20 years ago, where we acquired the Stapleton Airport property in Denver, Colorado, and converted it from an airport, first time it was ever done, into a community, okay? This was 4,700 acres, 6 million feet, 6 million yards of concrete and asphalt that needed to be recycled, $125 million environmental cleanup, 100 different contaminants of all types in the soil that we had to take and have, have specific, um, with EPA was, partial of it was a superfund site, we had to take EPA, Colorado State Health Environment, and the city, and work together to create the specific cleanup standards for everything on the site. The plan was to re-knit it back into the community of Denver. And so this is 20 years ago, it's 4,700 acres, $125 million cleanup, $725 million in infrastructure had to go in, 1,100 acres of parks and open space, 12,000 homes, 10 million feet of commercial, zero public investment. That was the challenge. Project is, is nearly complete now, 17,000 people live there and, um, work there. And it is one of the foremost communities in the country, and we, and Peter was the master plan designer of this. And I just am bringing this up because everything at the Baylands has been done before, not in this community, but that technology exists, we know how to do that, and we want to work with the community to bring that to fruition. So with that, I want to bring Peter up.
You know, uh, I, I think that we're just trying to introduce ourselves. We want to work with this community. Quite frankly, I've been sitting here, listening to everybody's comments, and, uh, am actually really excited about the opportunity, and I think this needs to be an interactive process. 35 years ago, I wrote a book called Sustainable Communities. It's hard to believe 35 years. And it was a, one of the first times, I was an academic at the time at Berkeley, it was a theory, the idea that we could build communities that were really good to the land and created positive communities and created healthy lives. And now it's kind of what we do, and that's the really good news. I followed it with work on transitory development. And so I've had a long career in trying to make some of these great principles reality. And I find the only way to do that is to work with the community, to actually listen to what people want. And listening to what, what people were saying today made a lot of sense to me. Oops, this got all jumbled up somehow. Yeah, anyway, my, these are my principles. Everybody has a value system, and I don't pretend I don't have a value system. My value system for designing communities rests on these four principles. One of them's covered up there. It's connectedness. How does the place connect to everything around it? We all lead regional lives, our jobs, the culture, the larger environment, economic opportunity, everything is at the, at that scale, and yet we live in local communities. And we need both, and we need them to be connected. This is a site where those connections are really robust. I've never seen a transitory site this, as good as this in terms of connectivity. Diversity and balance, I've heard a lot of people talk about that this evening, which is just about how you mix housing and shops and recreation, civic uses, art, trails, jobs, how you mix it together to create a really healthy community. That's really one of the most fundamental elements of great communities. Human scale is about, the gentleman was talking about the bikeways. It's about creating walkable neighborhoods. We've been designing cities around cars for too long. This is my personal belief. And we need to start designing them around walking and biking and actually people running into each other and being connected. There's a big distance here between the two parts of Brisbane. And so the question is, how do we connect? But I think trails and bikeways and shuttles are probably going to be a really healthy part of the mix. And finally, the fourth principle, and I put, I, this slide is all messed up now, but I put it in the slideshow before I even listened to everybody here. The fourth one is conservation and restoration. We have to repair the damage we do to our environment. And the best way to do it is to make it really great places that people want to be in. And so that's the challenge here. These are projects we've done all over the Bay Area, including Bay Meadows, um, the crossings, Combar, we just recently completed work on the, uh, the Concord Naval Station area. I, I've grown up here, I know the Bay Area, this is my home. There was previous work by a really great design firm that, I don't know how many of the, how much community interaction has happened, but I pulled a couple ideas from that as starting points. And I think this idea, no matter, and I, I do appreciate everybody's idea that the housing should be spread out more, so we can get more variety, so we can get more interaction with open space. But there's still going to be vast amount of open space, and restoring that open space to ecological health will be one of the challenges of this project. And then connecting it to everybody will be part of it. There has to be an area where that ecological open space becomes active open space, that's part of the community, that's directly accessible. And so you begin these various layers of community building. And then when you get to the TOD area, um, I think it's important that even there you have variety in housing type and scale. So the densest stuff is at the core, it steps down to the, uh, the area one, as you've been calling it, and then it steps down again into area two and opens up into more open space. I'd see that as the, the, a, a, a healthy direction to study. Now, um, Greg already covered Stapleton. Yeah, but, I mean, what was going on there was, of course, the Platte River and Westerly Creek, two beautiful repairing quarters were paved over by the airport. And we brought them back, and we made them the heart of the community. And that's totally feasible, uh, you know, along with creating a mixed-use environment. And so these greenways, which now are the restorations, sometimes in hardscapes, sometimes in natural ecological environments. But the Stapleton project has everything that I think, um, is talked about here. It had the transit, it has the urban centers that are walkable and local, create local destinations, it has gathering places and big public spaces. The lower left there is the, the town green for Stapleton. For me, it's always about where people go, how they gather, uh, what places do they share? And how can we create places that this whole community can share, not just, um, uh, the new, the newcomers? Bay Meadows, a long time ago, I did the overall master plan in the phase one area there, and it's come out very nicely. But it uses some of the elements that I think are going to be needed here, which is, we have to buffer the railroad tracks, and commercial buildings are best for that. We start to get a natural mixing through the site, east-west, because of that proximity to rail, and then feathering out into areas that can be more residential. Creating 24-hour communities. We all want to do this, we know how to do it. But it's very important, once again, that we not just have a, one area for housing and one area for jobs and another area for industry. They have to mix, so that the public spaces within those areas are used night and day, seven days a week. They're not just vacated after work, or they're not just empty during the day when everybody's off at work and school. And so that's a really important principle. Uh, and, you know, in all this, whether it's commercial or residential, where's the open space? How does it function? Sometimes it can be quite small and wonderful. There's a missing middle now we have in the Bay Area. We have single-family areas and we have multifamily areas, and we don't have much in between. We have to solve the affordable housing problem, but we also have to create more housing in the middle, and townhouses are that. You know, we have a declining percentage of households, our families with kids. Lots of people don't necessarily need a big yard anymore, whether they're empty nesters or they're young couples, but they don't want to live in an apartment. We need to create more housing choice and housing diversity. I noted that you guys have adopted the sustainability framework that uses the, uh, the, the, a very, very advanced system. And this is a, a tool that we've created for the state of California called Urban Footprint that actually allows, and by the way, it's free to, to your city, uh, because the city, the state helped pay for it. It allows you to actually organize all the data around your city, it allows you to build different scenarios, and then for each scenario, it allows you to measure the environmental, social, and economic impacts. So you don't have to go blindly into any scenario. So we have great tools, we have great experience, and what I've seen here tonight is we have a great community to work with. So we'd like to make sure that this general plan amendment leaves enough flexibility so that all the ideas I've heard so far can be realized. You know, you, when you're designing communities, it's never either/or. The best solutions are always both and. You don't have to choose in so many cases. Anyway, I've run way over time. I see a certain frown on the mayor's face, but I'm sorry for that. Thank you for giving me your time.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, that's the last slips that I have. I don't have any more slips. Is anybody who wishes to speak on this? Paul? Come forward.
Paul Buscale, Brisbane resident. So, um, I didn't turn a slip in, because I like to wait to the end, so I could hear things like this. And I'm glad there's some creativity coming to the table. I just wanted to reiterate some things I've said over the years. One, I would like to know if, um, there has been any research into the possibility of, when there is a cleanup, that the cleanup could be conveyed over to the unregulated landfill site, eliminated the threat to other communities of hauling away hazardous waste through those communities, like Mr. Zola said. I don't know if it's gained any traction or not, but I think it would be feasible, because it's my understanding that mitigated measures will be done when feasible. So it makes sense to take the OU1 and OU2 hazards and just conveyor them right over to the unregulated landfill and bury them in that. So that's one thing I would like to restate. One of the other things that I've mentioned would be floating structures. So, you know, back in the day when I talked about floating structures on Visitation Creek, widening Visitation Creek, I went to the ultimate authority and I talked to Will, um, the director of the BCDC, Will Travis, and, um, asked him about it. And his comment was, not only should that happen, uh, in low-lying areas, he would, um, give it his stamp of approval at the time. You know, he said, "We need more wetlands, we don't need more open bay." You know, and the advantage to floating structures would be, they'd be earthquake-proof, they would be, uh, not susceptible to liquefaction. We wouldn't have a tsunami on this part of the bay big enough to affect anything, so, you know, they'd be sea level, sea level rise adaptable, you know, our sewage treatment, our tanks that we would need if we're not pumping our sewer to San Francisco like we are now, uh, could be floating, a park could be built on top of that. So, you know, Will Travis at the time, he was the director of the BCDC, he said he would approve that. He said that would be a great idea to have floating structures. The structures wouldn't have to be built to earthquake standards. So if we're talking about sustainability, you know, we could cut our costs way down if we weren't hauling our toxic waste to some landfill, why can't we put it in our landfill? We had a, a person here that said that, that hadn't been done, and she also said it didn't mean that it couldn't be done, it just, they hadn't done that before. So I would hope we could look into that possibility. One of the other things that I thought about, um, you know, the kids are going to be going to those schools if houses are built in the Baylands or in the Bay Shore School District, that's not Brisbane. Does that mean that Brisbane residents are going to be voting on, like we just did, Measure L or Measure J for the Bay Shore School District? Are we going to be voting for their stuff that's going on the, on the Bay Shore School District? No. So, but those Brisbane residents probably will be, because that's their kids. So where do we draw that line? One of the other things I proposed, and I think you should still look into this, and UPC in particular, which would eliminate that cleanup, would be to strike up a deal with the state, move their development, which could be restricted, not restricted to 1,800 to 2,200 homes, to where the Cow Palace site is. And then we could put an event center on the Baylands that could be a regional draw. You know, we, we talked about bringing something substantial to the Baylands. A long time ago, they talked about all auto dealerships. You know, um, not the kind of draw we want, we don't need all those bright lights for all those parking lots 24/7, but, um, you know, we got to get creative. And I think the Cow Palace, which the state owns that property, could be a great spot to build some real high-density. And the word affordable housing doesn't mean affordable for middle-income families, okay? It just means below market rate. So, you know, when I heard the housing advocates coming to the meetings talking about affordable housing, so the millennials could have a house, I had to laugh at that, not laughing at them, but how does middle-class people, how are they able to afford, uh, the, the market-rate homes and just below market rate? It's almost impossible. So, you know, um, I waited till the end, I heard these gentlemen talking about what they've done in the past. I didn't hear much about work that was done on a superfund site, okay? The sites that they were talking about seem to be relatively clean. So, um, you know, the renewable energy, that's a big deal. You know, we, we rely on a grid that comes from, uh, Hetch Hetchy, um, Duke Energy, you know, all these places that are far away, okay? Uh, renewable energy in the Baylands would put us at the beginning of the grid. If we had Bloom boxes, like Flower Bloom, spelt B-L-O-O-M, we could store solar energy. So, you know, we could get creative. You know, all the big companies down in the Silicon Valley, they can't be caught with their pants down and not have the power to run their systems. So they have storage that, um, uses, you know, different types of, um, uh, energy-producing, sources, but they store the power. So, a couple of things I wish UPC could look at, and, you know, the whole thing about Jerry Hill and Scott Wiener and even that attorney that the city hired here that told us that we wouldn't have a chance in fighting Sacramento to build houses. We don't have to build houses in the Baylands. We're not, we're, we're not required to build houses, we've met our arena numbers, we've even exceeded those numbers. And it's just planning for it, it doesn't mean it has to be built, okay? So for Jerry Hill, for Scott Wiener, for that attorney that came here to our city that we paid for, that says you guys don't have a chance to fight Sacramento. I mean, I was really upset with that. That wasn't okay. That wasn't okay that we have a person that comes in here and tells us we don't have a chance. You know, our- You know, our founding fathers are rolling over in their graves knowing that things like that are being presented to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else who has not spoken? Hold on. Megan? Yeah, Megan. Let me get anybody, Barbara, that hasn't spoken yet who wishes to speak first.
Hi, council. Thank you so much for everything you're doing. Sorry, I don't have much of a voice right now. I was sick this week. Um, it's great here listening to all this today. I learned so much. One of the things that I do, and I have to say, I was, grew up in Colorado and was back there in March and was supposed to go see Stapleton. My niece kept urging me, and I ended up playing with my, uh, grandnephew instead, but I missed it, but I will on my next visit. Um, but I do urge you, um, it was really great, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Um, so much information today, um, is to kind of look at some of the projects that these guys have done, because it looked really wonderful on the screen. But, um, looking at, talking to the past mayors and the past city councils, I don't know if you guys have done that, what are the issues that they came up with? Where are some of the issues that happened throughout the process? Were, did they give their word, and did they really come to fruition with honorability and the integrity that I think we really need in the Baylands? Um, and really looking at what they've done and talking to the other cities and seeing, you know, going past and looking at our mayors, that all, all of our past mayors coming up here, and hopefully getting in touch with some of them from the process, from the beginning to the end, and finding out, this is, what are the issues so that we can kind of dodge some of that stuff early on? Uh, that's pretty much what I want to say, and thank you guys for everything you're doing.
Tony?
My name is, uh, Tony Attard, a 40-year resident of Brisbane. And people still want to cherish Brisbane, and what is Brisbane about? I'll tell you what Brisbane's about. Brisbane is about a 30-year fight to save San Bruno Mountain. That's what Brisbane's about. And also, uh, Mountain Watch. Mountain Watch is, has stewardship and takes care of San Bruno Mountain, cleans up the canyons. And, you know, we had the Northeast Ridge Development, and what did we get from them? We got a beautiful Mission Blue Center from the Northeast Ridge Development. That's wonderful. What are we going to get from Universal Paragon? Well, maybe the restoration of the Roundhouse? Okay, that's really good, and, and, and the problem is that the restoration of the Roundhouse will benefit Universal Paragon because it will be a showcase. If we want to, uh, to benefit the residents of Brisbane, how about 125 acres of land for clean energy production to produce energy positive? And that way, it'll be more, more electricity than is needed on the Baylands, and the rest of it will be returned to us, the residents of Brisbane, where we can benefit from this. This would be a good, uh, gift for the city of Brisbane, 125 acres, clean energy production. On my garage is a sign for the last 10 years that said, "Energy Positive" for the Baylands. So have energy positive means extra energy that will be brought back to us, the residents, so we all can benefit. That could be a good gift for us. Now, uh, it's been, you know, a long, long battle, and for, I've been involved with Cribble, with Anya Miller from the beginning, and, um, our goals was, you know, um, to get us off of coal and, and, and dirty, uh, dirty energy. And what, what golden opportunity we could have here with just about 125 acres to produce clean energy, clean energy production. Uh, energy neutral is a, is a good idea, and don't get me wrong, I think it's a good idea, and had all the cities done it to begin with, with energy neutral, creating energy for their site and, and not relying on the grid, that would have been fine. But we're, we're going to need energy positive, and I think that's where the, we should go for the future, not depending on, on, uh, dirty energy. And so what gift could we get? 125 acres for clean energy production? I mean, after all, we got a mission, we got the Mission Blue Center for, for the Northeast Ridge Development, and we seem to have gotten away from, uh, what, what, uh, the majority of the people wanted. They wanted to have, they want us to be able to produce some clean energy. Now, yes, all the buildings can have solar on it, but, uh, and the 25 acres that, uh, Universal Paragon offered would be energy neutral. And again, energy neutral is not bad, don't get me wrong, but we have an opportunity. Let's do energy positive. Clean energy production, 125 acres, all the buildings have solar on it, and we, as Brisbane citizens, can benefit from it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Okay. Anybody who has not spoken? Come on up.
Um, I'm Rich. I'm partner with Tony. I've been here 15 years, and I appreciate your, you know, designing, uh, good faces. I just want to make two comments. One is a light-
Rich, Rich-
Yes?
Or a microphone? Speak so loud, anyway.
Yeah.
Well-
The people on TV, the people who are watching TV and need to hear you.
Okay, that's cool. Um, I'm sorry, I'm an amateur at this. Two points only. One is, I wanted to have, um, uh, light, to control light pollution. We're kind of used to looking out and seeing dark, and I like the sky, so just down, the kind of lighting that aims the, the light that illuminates the property down. And the second thing is on the definition of energy positive, could in fact be considered energy neutral for wider than just that local development. For example, Brisbane could have a plan, let's say by 2050, that would be 100% energy neutral for the entire city, and by the way, also include the charging of electric vehicles. So trying to plan the amount of energy that we would need to hit the goal of energy neutral for the entire city, including, uh, electric charging of vehicles.
Great. Thank you, Rich. Anyone else who has not spoken? Barbara, come on.
I've just realized I've just got to break my things up into two sessions. Um, I'm really hoping you guys will consider the efficiency housing. I think that this is Brisbane's opportunity to leapfrog what other cities like San Jose, San Francisco, and Belmont are doing. They're all, uh, looking and moving in this direction, and I think we can be out on front on this, um, as we have been out on front on conservation, on the sustainability framework, on a lot of the space, work we've done on open space and ecology as well. Um, it gives us an opportunity to give, uh, increase our rental unit stock. Rentals are tighter than single-family home in the market. Um, there'll be multi-unit buildings, there'll be high, we can have high-density and low-rise because that 400-square-foot maximum, you don't have to have really tall buildings in order to get in enough units. Um, and they'll be low-cost. So I think this is the closest we can come to, and I'm, I'm sorry I waited so long to bring this forward. I didn't want to do it prematurely because I really felt that, um, it would be tipping our hands, um, and, but maybe I waited too long. I hope you'll still consider it anyway, because I feel honestly, it's as close as we're going to come to having a cake and eating it too solution. Um, I wanted to say a little bit about history. When UPC came forward with the Baylands proposal, their initial proposal was for 2, 2,200 units. They went up to 4,400 units. You got to think that maybe they kind of planned that negotiating space from the beginning. Um, also UPC shoots, so I think you all know this history, but maybe some people have lost sight of it, that, um, UPC got Schleg lock site because they sued the, over the contamination in OU1. That was not a small settlement. I don't know if OU2 is more contaminated or not. It quite possibly is, I'm not denying that, but OU1 is no cakewalk either. Otherwise, they wouldn't have won that lawsuit and that enormous settlement. Um, with density, I'm just kind of concerned about, you know, the Millennium Towers. I don't want, because it's a high liquefaction zone, and anything that's going to be underpinned there is going to be crazy, so I, I feel better we're sticking off with low-rise. Um, if we could recover our Caltrain station that got moved all the way to the north ends of the Baylands, then maybe it would make sense to bring housing a little further south, assuming that we can make OU2 safe. Um, and responding to the plan specifically, I've said before, I'm deeply disappointed with the ratio of housing to commercial that's being proposed. It only covers about, the plan, uh, Baylands plan scenario only covers about 33% of its housing needs. Um, I would rather, so to that end, I would rather see the Baylands project be financially neutral rather than financially beneficial to the city, not to make us any worse off. But if we're going to do housing, which I still don't want to do over my dead body, I would rather take the moral high ground and have a project that is just neutral for us and benefits the Bay Area to the greatest extent possible. I have a strong conviction that if we're building housing, it needs to make things better and not worse. Um, I think we need to look at a plan that pencils out for the city. I'm not in favor of building housing on toxic, toxic land, but I would like the city to consider less commercial, leaving more room for new, renewable energy generation, energy generation and storage, and we can maybe find a way that, to make this pay for us. It puts no one in danger while reducing other impacts and decreasing our dependency on fossil fuels. Water. Uh, we need to define what reliable water supply means. Right now, the developer and staff seem to be in agreement that a handshake deal with UPC in Oakdale is reliable. Your citizens and at least a few judges disagree. Either way, we need to, uh, get this clear up front before we have a vote. Energy neutral is way too low of a bar. All buildings must be net zero by 2030 anyway. We, um, you're basically asking for the minimum that's going to be legally required, and that's no great feat, I'm afraid to say. They're also competing definitions for energy neutral. I would suggest that we look into a maximum CO2e per capita instead of looking for energy neutral. Um, that's the way the scientists are looking at things these days, like carbon foot per person. And that's, uh, also, Bay Area Air Quality Management District also measures things that way, so I think we need to redirect on that one. Um, and I spoke with the California Historic Preservation Society a while back, and they described the condition, and I described the condition and what's happening and the events around the Roundhouse and its degradation. And, um, they told me that this is referred to as demolition by neglect. And so whatever you do, I want you to require UPC to secure the Roundhouse now. I've said this before, don't wait till the vote, don't wait till the development. They need to show good corporate citizen. They've got new staff here. We'll start by securing the Roundhouse tomorrow. Um, and then I just wanted to restate some of my goals for the Baylands. Facilitate ecology and zero waste. Restore the Roundhouse. Preserve the Lagoon. Recycled water. Wetlands preservation. 25% open space as required in our general plan. Um, the train tracks be preserved functionally in order to support ecology and the Roundhouse. Solar energy and solar, and energy storage, and as much fiber optic as we can possibly get out of this deal. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barbara. Okay, we're, uh, past 10:30 now. Entertain motion to extend the meeting.
To what time?
Probably 11.
Is that, are we going to move on from the public hearing on this item and, or other issues?
Um, no, I think there's a few other people want to speak, so I want to get the public comment first, so.
Oh, okay. I thought we were out of slips.
We are, but I'm taking hands now. And as Barbara went, we're going round two. I think, Michelle, you want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. As long as it's anything you haven't said already. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor? All right. Okay. Michelle? I'll get you next, Greg.
I'm sorry. There were two questions I had that I didn't say the first time, and one is, when are we going to discuss the 800-pound gorilla in the room, which is high-speed rail? And where is it going to go, and how does it fit into this? And two, if we go ahead with this, uh, general plan amendment as, as, as it's planned so far, and it, and it passes, and then the developer doesn't agree to make a development agreement because they don't like it, what happens then? So I kind of want to play out some scenarios because I want to know, if we go forward, then what happens that protects us if we don't have a development agreement that meets what we've requested in the general plan? So it's just kind of a question that maybe we could ask before we move forward, before we, you know, know what we're going to do or decide. I mean, it's going to be an important issue when it goes to the vote, what happens if? That's my question.
Thank you. Greg?
Greg Anderson, again, I just have a brief one. I wanted to return to the issue of legislation. Uh, as I'm sure you're all aware, SB 828 recently passed, and it would be interesting to have legal analysis of how that might affect the Baylands. I don't think that this legislation is likely going to be as interesting as some potential future legislation that we may see, um, and its effect is likely to vary depending on how our arena numbers are adjusted based on, um, any plans that are made on the Baylands. But one thing I'm really interested about is how 828 might affect our plans if a range of units, like 1,800 to 2,200, are approved instead of a specific number, and how does that play out under 828? Thank you.
Okay. Hey, Greg. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Last chance. Come on forward. Waited till the end.
Hi, uh, I'm Nick, a resident. Just a few points on the Baylands. Um, you know, I think that we want to create a Brisbane community, uh, not a San Francisco housing development. Additionally, um, what's, what would be important to me is, uh, the entire west side of the Bayland should be remediated to the highest housing standards. Regarding the amendment, uh, we should give the council and the community greater flexibility to plan for the entire Baylands and not just box us in and, and leave us out of the planning process. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Anyone else wish to address the council on this matter? Come on forward, Anya. Yeah, just because I was looking at you, didn't mean that.
Are you weird?
I, uh, thank you. I appreciated the comment of, uh, the remediation person suggesting that you'd talk to former mayors and their experiences. And of course, we did have that big fight over the mountain to begin with, and 2,200 units that were proposed for the saddle of the mountain. And that was, uh, that was quite a fight. Took, took 20 years, and of course, since then, there were others. Um, but, uh, the other experience I have was during my time, we approved a tunnel avenue, uh, where it is now, from San Francisco to the Lagoon. And, uh, that was privately built, was maintained as a private road. That's why they have to fix the pumps, uh, but it was public access, so it's publicly accessible, but it's a private road. And at that time, we asked them, the owner at that time, whoever it was, to put in a separate bike way. And it is, was built and used on the right side as you go from here. And since then, UPC- And since then, UPC has allowed that to be totally destroyed. You can only see a remnant of it, just, uh, the existing or the old bike way, south of the lumberyard. It, you can't see the paving there, it was about four feet, but separated from the rear rotor. So I'm, just my experience, I was really disappointed that there was no enforcement, that they were allowed to destroy that bike way. And here we're talking about bikeways and connections. That, and San Francisco Bike Way comes down tunnel, they have their markings, and then people come down, thousands of people during our bike to work day, come down tunnel on a dangerous road. When, and if it gets more traffic, once slay's lock develops, we're all going to be gridlocked. That's, that's in there, yar, yar, already. And then, then, you know, that bike way is just going to be very important to, so that's another thing, if you can, in any phase of this ongoing thing, to make them restore that bike way, that would be a big improvement, infrastructure improvement, before the main development goes. Restore, you're gonna put the raccoon back, why don't you put the bike way back? That will benefit everybody. Yeah, so that's, that's my experience from, from past, working with developers and then what happens. Thank you.
Thanks Anya.
Oh my God.
Come on up, Deb.
Hi, my name's Deb Horn, Brisbane resident. Really wasn't planning on speaking, but, um, here I am. And once again, I, I always start by thanking you so much for your service, because I see your faces and, um, this has been a long process. And everybody has this great hope for the best and fear of the worst, and, um, I just, a couple comments from tonight, um, just a couple reflections, is that listening tonight was, uh, it was nice. I mean, listen to our community. The community cares about the community. I don't hear NIMBYs here. I hear people with innovative ideas. I hear people that are trying to make the best of this situation. I know you all are trying to make the best of this situation. Um, you know, so that's all very heartening. Uh, I do think we should pay attention to some of the points that Ray brought forward about zoning and language, um, maybe spend a little time looking at it. We don't now fall under SB thirty-five because of our general plan that forbids housing and because of the hazards. Once our general plan changes and we have remediation, we're much more vulnerable to be forced to use a lot more land than you would like to put housing on. So I think that that zoning language is something to pay attention to. Um, and then I see these beautiful pictures of, you know, UPC designs that I've seen before, and, um, it reminds me of the tree, right? There's trees in all these pictures, and yet because of our complex situation here, um, because this is, was the bay, and then it was garbage, or then it was rubble, um, and we're not cleaning it up, we're capping it, we can't plant trees in this remediated land. And I see all these pictures with trees, and I feel a little bit like, oh, I'm caught up in the hope and it's wonderful, but, um, I think we need to focus on the fact that, um, Bill's question, what do people want who will live there? And bottom line, yeah, we want to drink beer and we want to be beautiful, we want to have a good time. People want safety for their families and for their loved ones, and people need affordability. So I just think that should be guiding principles along with, you know, how much community means to us here in Brisbane. Anyway, that's all I have to say, and thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks Deb. Barbara? Please, please keep it short.
I just, I just wanted to boggle for a moment at that mixed-use zoning on the map. I mean, how did that get past us? And when I say us, I include me too, because I didn't notice that either until Ray brought it forward. That's a little embarrassing, really. Um, and I wanted to support a lot of the things Ray said. I think he's brilliant. I'm sorry if you disagree with me, but I think Ray is brilliant. And, um, there was one other minor point, but you know, it's tired, and I'm just going to let everybody go home. But let's, but please tell me right now to my face that that mixed-use on that map is going to go away.
It's a concept right now.
Okay, it's, but the concept is going to go away. Right? Okay, thank you. Oh, um, I remember the other thing. It says right in the DEIR, there will be no trees planted in the ground because of, they won't penetrate the crap. I mean, it does say that in the DEIR, and if that's wrong, then we need to know why that's wrong. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, so entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, staff, uh, I, I, this is, uh, a lot of good information tonight, so going forward, um, we're obviously going to have to compile all of these comment. I know, for, for somebody that's deaf, you can't understand that, right? I said, so obviously, we got to compile the, uh, information, right, of all the comments and everything like that. Um, what's it look like going forward for the twenty-first? Because it seems like, uh, you know, we're going to have to have some time to kind of crunch this, so, and the council to, to take a look at it and have some dialogue, so.
Um, so, I guess that kind of leads into, uh, your calendar.
Yeah.
So we had July, or June twenty-first, and then, uh, July nineteenth. Um, what we might want to look at doing is, uh, setting aside, um, June twenty-eighth and July twelfth, if I've got the days right.
Okay. Ju- June twenty-eighth and what?
July twelfth.
And, um, June twenty-eighth and July, is July twelfth a Thursday?
Yes.
And July twelfth? As, as dates. Um, and then we can, um...
Maybe lift it above there?
Do we have the twenty-first set up as a public hearing? So the twenty, the twenty-first is, um, established as a public hearing, um, but we could continue that to the twenty-eighth if we're not ready on the twenty-first. So I, I, I think what you're saying is there should be some flexibility in the calendar based on the amount of input we've gotten tonight, and have an opportunity to be able to carefully go through that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Because we want to be able to assimilate.
Yeah.
Assimilate the information. Okay, does council have any, uh, questions or anything for staff?
Um, I, I think council, or I'm, I'm sure staff heard a lot of the questions that were asked by, by, um, the public, but I would want to get information on SB eight twenty-eight, because I've heard of SB eight twenty-seven, but I don't think I've heard of SB eight twenty-eight.
Yeah, there was an SB eight twenty-eight that, that was being worked on, so I think that was part of the comment, so staff is going to come back.
Right, no, I just wanted to reiterate that I'd like to find out more about that, because I, I don't know about it. And, uh, other than that, I think staff probably picked up on a lot of the things, and I am interested in the, um, change of zoning, uh, or tweaking of it to make sure that we're, or have staff look at that to make sure we're, uh, covering us as much as we can.
Yeah, I, I think the comment, uh, or at least the way I took the comment was that we just need to make sure the map is clear about where housing is and where housing isn't, and our use of language.
Yeah, and we got to have a, a thorough discussion, you know, all the comments, you know? Everything that everybody presented tonight, you know, and for the folks that aren't here anymore, that we're smart enough to get in and get out, and so.
So there are specific questions that came about from some of the comments raised that weren't specifically, they were questions that came to my mind based on things people mentioned, but weren't specifically asked by, by certain speakers. So what I think, what I'm going to do in the interest of time is type those up for staff. That way you can respond to me in advance. I'll probably ask them at the next meeting, so the public can hear those answers, but I think that might be the best way, instead of like trying to iron all that out right now.
Yeah.
Is, is that okay?
Yeah, that's excellent.
Okay, very good, so, um...
I just wanted to thank...
I felt Karen here staring at me, so.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, the community. I mean, we had a packed house, and they came in with some excellent feedback, and, you know, we definitely took it all in. And, uh, we have to make some adjustments, absolutely, and we're going to do it, and, um, but you know, that, that one thing about meeting the site, you know, to those highest standards, the real housing standards, we're going to do that. And so, um, thank you again for, uh, giving your input, and, uh, we'll keep it going. Thanks.
Karen?
I took a lot of notes in an email format, which I'll forward to the city right away with all your comments, so, um, hopefully we can make something brilliant.
Okay, city managers, upcoming activities. We got eleven minutes.
Brief, um, you just hold on for one quick minute. So, um, Saturday night, there was a, um, event called Brisbane's Got Talent. Uh, that has been canceled now. Um, there were only four submissions. The, uh, four individuals who had submitted will, um, be asked to, uh, or be given the opportunity to, um, do their talents at the Star City Music Festival, which will be pay, taking place on August eighteenth. And then just a reminder that, uh, we will be all back together, or at least us, back together Saturday morning at ten o'clock, and council chambers here for, uh, the budget review.
Oh, that was enthusiastic.
This is not new news.
It's going to be here?
Yes.
It's, it's only a five-hour meeting.
Almost was going to go to DoubleTree.
Well, at least we've got forty-eight hours off.
Yeah.
No, you don't.
We got to read that binder, right?
Well, you know.
That might be helpful.
I think you got like thirty-six hours off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, except the days that, that I'm working. Oh, okay.
You got, you got tomorrow. Take, take tomorrow off, Terry, she's, you got sick time. Tell them I said it's okay.
S I C or S I K.
All right, uh, mayor council matters, uh, countywide assignments, um, and subcommittee reports. Let's see, who wants to start off? Terry, you want to start off a roundtable?
Um, yes, I had a San Francisco roundtable meeting last night that was, uh, woefully underattended. We had no quorum because I'm assuming of the Warriors game. Um, so those of us who did attend got a lot of information and nothing very earth-shattering and nothing that we could take action on. Um, last week, we did have a airport roundtable citizens group meeting, and, uh, we just got some items, but we really didn't have a plan of attack for anything yet. We are going to reach out and meet with, um, members of Pacifica City Council. They have created a subcommittee that we will be working on some noise issues that may have, um, joint solutions. And then I attended a, uh, North County Fire Authority, JPA. That one was Tuesday, and, um, we accepted their, their budget and, um, their cost allocation for the upcoming year. We had some comments from Daily City, uh, one of the members from Daily City who was interested in if we could merge the, um, fire departments instead of just having a JPA, and, uh, that was tabled for the time being as being not a very feasible idea at the moment, and, uh...
Lightly. To put it lightly.
Put it lightly. Um, and let's see, I think that's all I can remember right now, because I don't know where my iPad went with my notes.
Okay, I'll go next. Aside from airport, airport noise and North County Fire, which Terry mentioned, um, you and I had a history, um, subcommittee meeting, and we met to discuss the library district agreement regarding the history room, and we were, we're going to be, um, bringing that to them for comments and then eventually bringing it forward to council. We also discussed a really exciting project, which is a oral history video, so we can capture a lot of this, um, a lot of the stories about Brisbane and information about Brisbane from longtime residents. And so we looked at a list of potential people to interview, and, um, we're going to be looking at potentially needing to purchase a camera for this project and, um, hire a part-time person to manage the project, schedule the interviews, you know, put the, put everything together, um, research the topics and that sort of thing. So that'll be coming forward to council soon to approve a budget for that, and we'll, we'll discuss more of the details on that, uh, as it comes in the next couple weeks.
Karen?
Library JPA next Monday, um, was last week as well. Um, looking at the budget for the Brisbane Library, they're all pretty excited as well for other things that are going on in the, in Samhain County, but it's a very interesting process.
Clifford?
All right, uh, I attended the Hart Board meeting last week. Nothing really exciting, except that we, uh, moved forward to give the executive director a raise, because he has been doing a tremendous job, uh, with the board and, and the organization. Um, he's, he's really connecting, uh, the Hart Board with, uh, these key foundations and, and corporate sponsors, uh, because they are vital in helping to raise money for affordable housing. And then, um, we attended the Home For All event, uh, in Belmont, myself, Madison was there a little bit, and, uh...
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, Clay and, and John, um, you know, just addressing the, the importance of, of connecting housing with transit, and, um, yeah, great speaker.
Yeah, we did. That was good. Make a motion to adjourn?
That's, that's all I had was just, um, the one with you. No, no, we're not adjourned yet. Yeah, so, um, we still got five minutes.
We don't have to use it all.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, we do, yeah, hold on. Okay, um, we have the city council meeting scheduled, so, um, yeah.
Is everyone good with that?
Proposed new dates of, uh, January, or June twenty-eighth and July twelfth.
I will say I do have a PCE meeting on the twenty-eighth, so I'll just have to let them know that.
We don't have any days on, these are all Thursdays?
Correct.
They're all Thursdays, yeah.
Um, I know I'm going to have an airport land use on, I believe, the twenty-first, and then the High-Speed Rail Authority, I believe, also. And I was, that makes it really difficult to try to do multiple back-to-back meetings.
Skip them.
That's a normally scheduled meeting, I think so.
Is it?
Uh, June twenty-first and third.
Yeah, the, the, those are, well, the, the, the twenty-eighth and the twelfth would be additive meetings, the twenty-first would be a regular council meeting.
Okay, so what, I'm sorry.
June eighteenth is actually, um, falls on a Monday.
Okay, and these are the dates you're adding, the blue?
Yes, that's the proposed, um...
Okay, because this says all Thursdays.
With, with the exception of that one Monday, that Ingrid just said, yeah.
It's already in my calendar, Ingrid.
Yeah, me too. We talked about this last week.
Yeah, that one's in my calendar, I had a, I had a...
Suggested location, okay.
How about, it's getting late, how about we'll send it out to you tomorrow with the new calendar, but yes, it will be Thursdays.
Yeah.
Except for the Monday.
Okay, good on that.
I'll make it work. I'll make it work.
Okay. Written correspondence, we had a non-Bayland written correspondent from Kate Chatfield on May. And Baylands correspondence, we had Ron Colonna, Ray Miller, Luke Bichard, Alex Coriano, Esther Diane Scribner, Lisa Dumont, California Public Utility Commission, Jessica Aloff, Lynn Grant, Tony Varios, Dana, Dana Dilworth, and Dana Dilworth again, and Linda Detmer and Adina Levin. Okay. So that brings us to oral communications, number two. Paul, come on up.
Paul Biscal, Brisbane resident. So I, I didn't bring this up because it was Baylands deliberations, but on this proposed general plan land use diagram, if you can look at it, if all of you could look at it, concerning the Brisbane acres, I'm curious as to why forty-five of these parcels are not listed as open space, nor is Ice House Hill listed on here as open space. And that's a huge oversight.
Yeah, it's, you know, thanks, Paul. It's, it's a concept, concept map, and it'd be, you know, they'll put it on there. I think this is just more of an illustration of the Baylands, but I, I know that staff would take that under consideration.
Yeah, we, we hear the concern.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Oral communications, number two. All right. I don't hear anything. We are going to adjourn in memory of the city council.